Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Fairfield Representative Town Meeting held on June 22, 2020 via WebEx. I'm Karen Whackerman, the moderator and as representative from District 7. As a reminder to our participants tonight, please identify yourselves as you begin to speak. And can I ask everyone to clear their microphones until you are asked to speak? Can the clerk please do the roll call?
Sure.
Ms. McDermit?
Here.
Michael Holmes?
Here.
Veronica Monahan?
Here.
Amy O'Shea?
Here.
Bill Gerber?
Here.
Karen McCornish?
Bill is here, but he wasn't unmuted.
Cindy Peram?
Here.
Jeff Steele?
I am here.
Alex Durrell?
Here.
Matt Jacobs?
Here.
Scott Nickel?
Here.
Karen Pistilli? Laura Carson?
Here.
Alice Kelly?
Here.
Meredith Odenak?
Here.
Marcy Spolier?
Here.
Josh Garzko?
Here.
Julie Gottlieb?
Here.
Joe Seibert?
Here.
Dave Wolk?
Here.
Matt Ambrose? Hannah Gale? Lisa Havy? All right, here. Lisa Powell Dunmore? Lauren Bovee?
Here.
Mark McDermott?
Here.
Jill Vergara?
Here.
Karen Whackerman?
Here.
Hank Farren?
Here.
Pamela Ekonu?
Here.
Christine Messina?
Here.
Peter Solomon?
He's trying to log on.
Thanks. Drew Giorgiades?
Here.
Rick Rower? Christie Kelly? Bill Perigini?
Here.
Dana Elianello?
Here.
Elizabeth Altabelli? Frank Pateef? And Marissa Rengel? Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The first item we have set on the agenda is to receive a report from the tax assessor regarding the tax relief for the elderly and disabled homeowners program, which was included in the materials for tonight's meeting. The assessor usually provides a report on that program at the RTM's June meeting, but due to postponed deadlines for the program this year because of the coronavirus, he won't have all the statistics until a few months from now for his report at our September meeting. Item three on the agenda is a presentation by the Fairfield Police on its use of force policy. Chief Lyddie, the first select woman, select Leffowitz, Majority Leader Vergara, and I and perhaps others have signed the Mayor's Pledge from my brother's chin, which asks mayors and council to pledge to review use of force policies, get community input, and give to the policies. We wanted to take this first step to understand Fairfield's policy on use of force and have the opportunity to ask questions about it. And Chief Lyddie has been a great help in preparing this and eager to speak with us. There's a task force to study this issue and other racial justice issues, co-chaired by select women. So the RTM will work with the task force and consider what we can do and what the town can do on this issue. Chief Lyddie has joined us, as well as Deputy Chief Smith and Officer Calamar. We did receive a copy of the current use of force policy, which is in the materials for tonight's meeting. Chief, would you like to discuss this? Chief Lyddie?
I'm sorry, just an audio check. Can you hear me okay?
Now we can hear you, yeah.
Okay. I'm sorry about that, Madam Moderator. So yes, if I could just take a minute to explain our use of force policy and where we're at in terms of revisions that are coming.
Okay.
As you can see, our policy was last written in 2017, and it really addresses much of the narrative that's taking place in our country today. Specifically, it prohibits the use of chokeholds, except in deadly force situations. It requires that officers deploy de-escalation and calming strategies or verbal warnings prior to the use of force when feasible. It also lists lethal and less lethal weapons authorized by the department, mandate on policy and training prior to carrying any lethal or less than lethal weapons. Our policy contains a duty to intervene. There are reporting requirements that each and every time an officer uses force, a report will be completed, and it will be investigated by Professional Standards. An annual analysis and review of all use of force incidents also takes place. There is prohibition against warning shots and discharging firearms at or from moving vehicles. And finally, there is a requirement rendering medical aid after injury resulting from any use of force. Now, early last week, both the state and the federal government listed or came out with some new guidance for use of force policies. So our policy is in the process of being rewritten. It's 95% complete, and it contains some new provisions. I'll just list a couple of them briefly. It expands on a Supreme Court case called Graham versus Connor, which talks about objectively reasonable force, given the situation. The new guidance expands prohibitions on chokeholds to include arm bar holds, carotid artery holds, strangle holds, lateral vascular neck restraint, neck restraint, or hold with a knee or other object, or any other tactic that restricts oxygen or blood flow to the head or neck. Additional guidance on the restraint of prone subjects also includes avoidance of the use of prolonged prone restraint techniques. Individuals placed in handcuffs while in a prone position shall be placed in standing or seated positions as soon as practicable. Again, we are adding some of our own language to include reporting requirements to the Board of Police Commissioners annually on all uses of force. Now, I believe I also included our 2019 statistics on the use of force. And I temper it by saying that in 2019, we handled 45,000 calls for service. During those 45,000 calls for service, force was used in 12 cases. Of those 12 cases, five of them were tasered. And of the five taser, only three or three of them were non-firing events, where the taser was taken out of the holster, but the officer never had to fire it. Two of the incidents were closed fist punches, two incidents were dog bites, two incidents were takedowns, and one incident was a felony stop, where no one was injured, but that involved two different people. So new guidance should be coming out next week, and at this point, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions? I'd be surprised if there are no questions for Chief Lyddie, but I don't see any in the...
Yes, Madam Moderator, I have a question.
Yes, can you...
It's Mark.
For the deputy moderator, can you, would you be able to take over for me while I try to get my audio fixed?
Sure. I was trying to type in.
Mr. McDermott? Okay. So I'm turning over to Mr. McDermott for a minute.
Thank you. Mark McDermott, Deputy Moderator, RTM District 7. Chief, thank you for your overview here tonight, and thanks for coming to let us know what's happening at the Fairfield Police Department. I had a question. It was, I don't know, three, four years ago, we approved a grant for several body cams. I was wondering if they're being used, how they're being used, are all the officers trained in the use, and do we plan on expanding use? Thank you for that question. Yes, it was a little over a year ago, we made a last-minute decision to take full advantage of an OPM state grant for body cameras and in-car cameras. And we went all in on the project. We received 100% funding to the tune of $740,000 from the State of Connecticut. At the end of the day, that will provide a body camera for every single officer, and car cameras, 365 degrees for all of our vehicles. We are about 50% deployment right now. It was a challenging piece of technology to put into place. Our projected date for 100% completion is July 31st. So about half of our officers are using body cameras right now, and the other half should be up and running within 45 days. Okay, that's good to hear, because I'm reading a lot of, a lot of towns, cities don't even have them because they don't have the funding or the resources. And I'm glad to know that we're ahead of the curve on that one. So I think I'm done with my questions. We had, who was next here? Representative Odenak?
Hi, Meredith Odenak, District 4. You had mentioned that there's a review done of all use of force incidents at the end of the year. Are these internal reviews? And is there any form of external accountability, like an external auditor or an external review board?
So for the question, actually, the review takes place immediately after the use of force. An officer is required to file a special report, which is on a form that we received from the state. And that report, and every officer involved, their reports go to the Office of Professional Standards, which is an internal office within the police department. And that internal investigation takes place. Once the finding is made by Internal Affairs, the report goes to the Deputy Chief for review, and then it comes to the chief for review. And then annually, we have to submit an annual report to the State of Connecticut. There is no other process, other than the new policy will include that annual report being submitted to the Board of Police Commissioners for review also.
Okay.
Okay, Representative Carson?
Hi, Laura Carson, District 4. Just so I understand, the consequent, what are the consequences if they violate the no chokehold or the carotid artery or any of those sort of ones? What are the consequences to the policeman?
So any excessive use of force is considered a major infraction in our department and any department throughout the state. So the consequences, based on the circumstances, could be anything up to and including termination. Now, I, as chief of police, am limited in the amount of discipline that I can affect. Basically, I am limited to three days of suspension. So any, anything in excess of the three-day suspension has to go before the Board of Police Commissioners.
Okay. What if a fellow officer, is he required to step in and stop it?
Yes, our existing policy requires a duty to intervene, and the new policy expands on that, giving officers basically immunity for coming forward and reporting an excessive use of force case.
Okay, thank you. And one more thing on the issue of body cameras, what if they don't use their body cam when they're supposed to? What's the cost?
So they are required by policy to initiate the body camera during any interaction with the public, with certain exceptions. One exception being a member of the public requesting the officer to not use a body camera. At that time, the officer can, if they choose to make that decision, and they need to announce it on the camera, and then they can shut it off for whatever time that interview is taking place. But by policy, they are required to. Our car cameras are basically automatically go live when certain events within the car take place. The lights go on, or the siren goes on, or the rifle comes out of the rack. Those automatically trigger camera activation.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all you...
Representative... Oh, sorry.
Thanks.
Sorry, Representative Carson.
Representative Alice Kelly?
Representative McDermott, I am back, so thank you so much for covering for me, and hopefully people can hear me now.
Okay. You have Alice Kelly, Drew Giorgiades, and Gerber. That's your next three.
And...
Just when I was having fun.
Okay, thank you.
Just when I was having fun.
I know, you did a great job. Thank you very much. Representative Kelly, Alice Kelly?
Hi, I'm Alice Kelly, District 4. Actually, Laura Carson did ask my question about the exceptions to the body camera, but I'd like to ask the chief, with everything going on now with all the protests, are there plans to enhance training for the police force?
Yes, absolutely. You know, we, we have a pretty robust training system in place. A lot of the training that we receive annually is mandated training by the state. But what I've found, especially in dealing with the unbiased training and things of that nature, that it's the same training over and over again. So it gets a little stale, and I'm already starting to see new kind of out-of-the-box specialized training being offered. So we're going to try to take full advantage of that.
That's very good to hear. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Representative Gerber? I think I'm next, Giorgiades. Yes, I didn't know from your message if you wanted to go now or later, but you can go next. Okay. Representative Giorgiades?
Hi, Chris, I mean, hi, Chief, thank you so much for joining us.
Thank you.
My question is not about use of force. Nationwide, there have been a discussion of eliminating traffic stops because they have a tendency to lean towards profiling, racial or otherwise. Has your department considered, you know, eliminating stops for a broken taillight or an indicator light that's not working?
It's a good point, and you know, the reality of what our officers are going through right now, I tend to think, or I know that that isn't happening much anymore. We are, we are very much sympathetic to the national debate. We are, we are listening loud and clear. Ultimately, I think the Connecticut General Assembly would have some requirement to remove things like that from the infraction schedule. I'm sure that will be a debate, and you know, we will, we will seek our guidance from the state. But right now, you know, to be honest with you, our traffic stops are way down, our traffic complaints are way up. It's a difficult situation.
Okay. And then my final is a follow-up to your question. So you can give a three-day suspension to an officer that violates policy, and then it goes to the Police Commission, and it stops there? Or what happens after the Police Commission hears the complaint?
The officer could appeal that decision to the State Labor Board, and that's contained within the town charter.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Representative Wolk?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Sorry you can't see me, I'm having a problem with my video. Anyway, hi, Chief Lyddie, it's your friend Jay Wolk, Representative Wolk, District 5. I got a question, and hi, Deputy Chief Smith. I have a question. A few years ago, I don't know if you remember, Chief Lyddie, that during budget, one of our budget meetings, former Chief McNamara had brought up some, a study showing that if you graduated from college and became a police officer, you're more apt to not show, not use extreme force as much as somebody who didn't. Did you remember that, or is that something, was that a study, and then just, was it for a short period of time, and then just ended? So I'm just asking if you remember.
I have a vague recollection of Gary looking at a study. I know it wasn't a study that we did internally, but he, I believe he became aware of some kind of national statistic that supported that higher-educated officers were less likely to use force.
Thank you. And take care. Thanks for everything.
Thank you.
Representative Brower? Representative Brower? Okay, we'll come back to you if, maybe you're having audio issues. Representative Vergara?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. It's Jill Vergara, District 7. Hi, Chief Lyddie, thanks so much for coming to speak to us today. I really appreciate it. I think it's so great that you're a partner in this and that we're starting this dialogue. I, when you, Representative Giorgiades asked a question about changing the law for traffic stops, and you mentioned that it might, it's going to be an issue that the state legislature will have to pick up, and you said that you'd take your guidance from the state. For one of the issues that's being discussed tonight, chokeholds, this has been discussed at the state level, and the governor has issued an executive order completely banning chokeholds. Are you on board with that decision for our town as well? Do you think that we should be banning chokeholds like the state has?
So we, we've always had the prohibition of chokeholds. We do not train in their use, and at least since 2017, they were prohibited, except in deadly physical force scenarios, from our policy. The new guidance that just came out from, from the state maintains that, but it just expands the definition of a chokehold. And the new guidance that just came out from the presidential executive order contains basically the same language that has already existed in our policy since at least 2017.
Okay. It was my understanding that for state troopers, it's banned completely, though. There's no exceptions. Is that correct?
I don't know. I have not seen that language. I, you know, we receive our, our guidance from the Police Officers Standards and Training Council, and that's the guidance that post, correct.
Is that posted? Okay. Thank you. And there's been a reference in the materials about the Office of Professional Standards. What is that, that's contained within your department?
That is, that is a division within our department. It is commanded by a lieutenant. A more familiar term would be Internal Affairs Investigation. However, they also deal with policy. We've also recently transferred an officer into that unit to help us with some of these policies. That officer happens to have a J.D. degree, and is helping us get through some of the more critical policies.
Okay, thank you. I have one other question, if that's okay, Madam Moderator.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. We discussed the body cameras earlier, and I noticed that in the policy you sent us for use of force, there was a section, I think it was 11.1.16, that discussed reporting of use of force, and it mentions having to have photos taken of injuries and possibly the incident. But there was nothing about using body camera footage. If and when we have 100% of our officers with these body cameras, will that policy be amended to include footage from body cameras?
Yes, but it'll be contained in a separate policy that will be applicable to all incidents. We have, we have a body cam policy right now. I'd be happy to share that with the RTM.
Oh, okay.
And it addresses incidents of force and a variety of other situations.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Chief Lyddie.
Thank you.
Representative Brower? Maybe we lost Representative Brower. Okay, we'll go to Representative Gerber.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. Yeah, thanks for being here, Chief Lyddie. My, my interactions with the police in Fairfield have always been extremely positive. We've had police officers at events that we've held. It's always been incredible. Obviously, as a middle-aged white man, my perspective may not be shared by everyone, so I can't really speak for everyone. I guess my, my question relates to bias, which you, which you mentioned before, that you do have biased training, and you know, as there's potentially economic impacts to the town, I think it does fall under, you know, the RTM's, what we should be concerned about if there's ever, you know, a, an incident of racial profiling that leads to, that leads to escalation, that leads to use, excessive use of force, could have serious implications as it, as it has had elsewhere in the country. So that's one reason why I think we should all be very concerned. Fairness apart, there's also the economics and the budgetary considerations if there's more that we should be doing. And I guess my, my question is, do you know of any bodies in town, or any, or do you ever reach out to minority groups and sort of survey whether minorities, you know, African-Americans, other minorities in town feel that they're, that they're being treated fairly, that they're being profiled, you know? It's hard to look at stops and use of force because there's so few, so you can't really get a representative, you can't really get a sense when it's such a small percentage of, you know, in a town like this, until all of a sudden, something terrible happens, and then you say, "We should have done X, Y, Z." You can't necessarily, in a town our size, in the economic, you know, makeup of our town, you can't necessarily judge whether we're doing things right or wrong by such a small, you know, small sample of, of events. So I guess my question is, is there anything proactive you do or should be doing in terms of reaching out to, to minority groups and sort of getting a sense for whether people feel they or their children have been racially...
Right now, I tend to think, or I know that that isn't happening much anymore. We are, we are very, um, much sympathetic to the national debate. We are, we are listening loud and clear. Ultimately, I think the Connecticut General Assembly would have some requirement to remove things like that from the infraction schedule. Um, I'm sure that will be a debate and, and, you know, we will, we will seek our guidance from the state. Um, but right now, you know, to be honest with you, our traffic stops are way down, our traffic complaints are way up. Um, it's, it's a difficult situation.
Okay. And then my final is a follow-up to your question. So you can give a three-day suspension to an officer that violates, um, policy? And then it goes to the police commission? And it, it, um, stops there? Or what happens after the police commission? Here's the complaint.
Um, the officer, uh, could appeal that decision, uh, to the state labor board. And that's contained within the town charter.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Representative Volk?
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Sorry you can't see me. I'm having a problem with my video. Anyway, um, um, hi, Chief Liddy, it's, uh, your friend Jay Volk, uh, Representative Volk, um, District Five. Um, I got a question, and hi, um, Deputy Chief Smith. Um, I have a question. A few years ago, I don't know if you remember, um, Chief Liddy, that, um, during budget, one of our budget meetings, former Chief McNamara, um, had brought up some, a study showing that, um, if you graduated from college and became a police officer, you're more apt to not show, not use, um, extreme force as much as somebody who didn't. Did you remember that? Or is that something, was that a study? And then just was it for a short period of time and then just ended? Did it, um, so I'm just asking if you remember.
I, I have a vague recollection of, of Gary, um, looking at a study. It was, I know it wasn't a study that we did internally, um, but he, he, I, I believe he became aware of some kind of national statistic that supported that, um, higher-educated officers were less likely to use force.
Thank you. And take care. Thanks for everything.
Thank you.
Representative Brower? Representative Brower? Okay, we'll come back to you if, maybe you're having, uh, audio issues. Um, Representative Vergara?
Thank you, uh, Madam Moderator. It's Jill Vergara, District Seven. Hi, Chief Liddy, thanks so much for coming to speak to us today. Really appreciate it. I think it's so great that you're, um, a partner in this and, um, that we're starting this dialogue. I, um, when you, Representative Georgiades asked a question about, um, changing the law for traffic stops. And you mentioned that it might, it's going to be an issue that the state legislature will have to pick up. And you said that you'd take your guidance from the state. For one of the issues that's, um, being discussed tonight, chokeholds, um, this, this has been discussed at the state level and the governor has issued an executive order completely banning chokeholds. Are you on board with that decision for our town as well? Um, do you think that we should be banning chokeholds? Like the state has?
So we, we, we've always had the prohibition of chokeholds. Uh, we do not train in their use. And at least since 2017, they were prohibited, except in deadly physical force scenarios, from our policy. The new guidance that just came out from, uh, from the state, uh, maintains that, but it just expands the definition of a chokehold. And the new guidance that just came out, um, from the presidential executive order, uh, contains basically the same language that has already existed in our policy since at least 2017.
Okay. It was my understanding that for state troopers, it's banned completely, though. There's no exceptions. Is that correct?
I don't know. I have not seen that language. I, you know, we receive our, our guidance from the Police Officers Standards and Training Council.
Is that post?
And that's the guidance that, that post, correct.
Okay. Thank you. And, um, there's been a reference in the materials about the Office of Professional Standards. What is that, that's contained within your department?
That is. That, that is a, a division within our department. Uh, it is commanded by a lieutenant. Um, a, a more familiar term would be Internal Affairs Investigation. However, they also deal with policy. We've also recently transferred an officer into that unit, uh, to help us with some of these policies. That officer happens to have a J.D. degree and, uh, is helping us get through some of the more critical policies.
Okay. Thank you. I have one other question, if that's okay, Madam Moderator.
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. We discussed the body cameras, um, earlier. And I noticed that in the policy you sent us for use of force, there was a section, I think it was 11.1.16, that discussed reporting of use of force. And it mentions having to have photos taken of injuries and possibly the incident. But there was nothing about, um, using body camera footage. If, um, and when we have 100% of our officers with these body cameras, will that policy be amended to include footage from body cameras?
Yes, but it, it'll be contained in a separate policy that will be applicable to all incidents. We have a, we have a body cam policy right now. I'd be happy to share that with the R.T.M.
Oh, okay.
And it addresses incidents of force and a variety of other situations.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Chief Liddy.
Thank you.
Um, Representative Brower, question? Maybe we lost Representative Brower. Um, okay, we'll go to Representative Gerber.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good. Yeah, uh, thanks, thanks for being here, Chief Liddy. Um, my, uh, my interactions with the police in Fairfield, uh, have always been extremely positive. Um, we've had, uh, police officers at events that we've held. It's always been incredible. Uh, obviously, as a, uh, middle-aged white man, my perspective may not be shared by everyone, so I can't really speak for everyone. I guess my, my, uh, question relates to, uh, to bias which you, which you mentioned, uh, before, that you do have biased training. And, uh, you know, as there's potentially economic impacts to the town, I think it does fall under, you know, the R.T.M.'s, what we should be concerned about if there's ever, you know, a, um, an incident of racial profiling that leads to, um, that leads to escalation, that leads to, um, use, excessive use of force, could have serious implications as it, as it has had elsewhere in the country. So that's one reason why I think we should all be very concerned. Uh, fairness apart, there's also the economics and, and the budgetary, uh, considerations if there's more that we should be doing. And I guess my, my question is, do you, do you know of any bodies in town or any, or do you ever reach out to minority groups and, um, sort of survey whether, um, minorities, you know, African-Americans, other minorities in town feel that they're, um, that they're being treated fairly, that they're being profiled, um, have, you know? It, it's hard to look at, um, stops and use of force because there's so few, so you can't really get a representative, you can't really get a sense when it's such a small percentage of, you know, in a town like this, until all of a sudden, something terrible happens and then you say, "We should have done X, Y, Z." You can't necessarily, in a town our size, in the, in the economic, you know, makeup of our town, like, you can't necessarily judge whether we're doing things right or wrong by such a small, you know, small sample of, 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 of events. So I guess my question is, is there anything proactive you do or should be doing in terms of reaching out to, to minority groups and sort of getting a sense for whether people feel they or their children have been racially, racially profiled?
Thank you for the question. And, and the answer is yes. We've, uh, and, and this predates our current national situation. Um, we held a, a, a very informative, uh, uh, focus group meeting, um, with Yabantu at the library several months ago. It was very well-attended. Um, around that same timeframe, about four or five months ago, well, no, it was more like six months ago, we sat with the N double A C.P., um, you know, right here, uh, spent about two hours talking about, um, relationships and, you know, what, what we can do to help. And, um, a big part of that discussion was the N double A C.P. assisting us with recruiting. Um, I think it's very important that we, that we further our reach, um, and diversity within our organization. And, um, I'm going to be hiring very, very soon, so we're, we're, we're trying to find creative ways to attract people of color to our organization, aside from the ones that we already have. Um, I do have another, uh, thing in the works. COVID-19 kind of got in the way of it. Um, but we have three officers that were selected to, uh, to, uh, at least once a quarter, sit down with a minority population group and just have frank discussions. Um, no chiefs in the room, just them and officers. So we're, we're very excited. That should have started already, but, um, the COVID pandemic kind of put that on hold a little bit.
Chief Liddy, that's really nice to hear. Thank you for, uh, for, for going through that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Representative Odenak?
Hi, uh, Meredith Odenak, District Four. Um, so earlier you mentioned de-escalation tactics. Um, can you just explain a little more about what the de-escalation training entails? And how do you assess whether de-escalation would be, was utilized adequately before, um, an officer then moves on to force?
Yes, I'll jump in on that one, uh, for the chief. You know, a lot of the training, for, one of the things we do for de-escalation is a lot of the officers have gone through, um, what we call C.I.T. training. Um, and it's crisis intervention, and it goes through a lot of ways. Number one, to identify somebody that may have mental illness, somebody that may, uh, be under the influence, um, so that through recognition, we can then slow down. And there are different techniques that we can use to try to, as we go say, de-escalate the situation, so we don't have to go hands-on and use force against these people. You know, we learn and tell officers, take a little bit more time than what we might have done 20, 30 years ago, to, you know, try to identify the problem and work with them out in the field to resolve that without having to go hands-on. And then it goes back to training. From day one in the academy, um, they're taught on how to deal with people, how to use de-escalation techniques. You know, when we look at training, become a police officer and even get on the road, the academy now is about six months long. Uh, field training is another minimum of 12 weeks. Uh, so it's a long time just in the training process than the continual training we get. We get biased training, as the chief mentioned, that's state mandated, so that is done on a regular basis, as well as other cultural awareness training that we can use. So it's, it's a bunch of different things that basically, you know, we try to train the officers, take that step back first. You know, is there a way to talk our way through this without going to what you see on TV a lot, which is that they, you know, jumped into a hands-on situation? Um, so it's, it's a broad range of skills that be imparted on the officers that they can use in the field.
Can I just ask one more follow-up question? Um, I know some police departments, um, have hired social workers to not be armed officers, but to work alongside officers, um, until if there is an incident like mental health, um, crises that, that, uh, social worker is then on duty and can, and can address the situation in a way that is de-escalated and is a lot more, um, mental health-informed? Is that something that, uh, the department has ever thought about or looked into?
Well, what, what we do is, when we come across situations that are better dealt with by social services or mental health professionals, we refer our police report to them and they follow up on, on the calls. That's both Fairfield Social Services, um, which happens all the time, and occasionally we use, uh, Bridgeport Mental Health also. So we, we make that referral and get the individual advanced help.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Representative Perugini?
Uh, thank you, Madam Moderator. Thank you, uh, Chief Liddy for joining us this evening, and thank you, Deputy Chief Smith, for being with us and all that you do for our town. Your jobs are not easy, and as you know, I'm, I'm very much aware of the challenges that you encounter here in the Beach area. Um, I have a question relative to the traffic stop dialogue. It's an interesting debate. And if not mistaken, that is one of the most risky activities for a police officer, correct?
Um, it is, yes. It's very, it is risky.
But, but the, the, the benefits often outweigh the costs in not only addressing moving violations work, which is, as, as you know, our big issue in District Nine and throughout town, but also uncovering other crimes. And if not mistaken, those traffic stops have really enabled our police force to curtail other crimes, if I'm not mistaken. And there have been several large ones over the past couple of years. By implementing a moratorium on traffic stops, do you feel that will diminish, um, the safety of our community in that those stops have been highly effective in, again, curtailing other more serious crimes?
So I, I don't think the debate is necessarily going to be stopping traffic stops altogether. But I, I see the state legislature possibly addressing pretextual stops, which is stopping for equipment violations and things of that nature. There is a trade-off, though. Defective equipment can be dangerous. Um, not wearing your seatbelt can be dangerous. Children outside of a, an approved, uh, carrying device, it could be dangerous. So it's a trade-off right now.
And, and also, if not mistaken, highly correlated with other more serious crimes, correct?
That is correct. Um, you, you know, you, it's very hard to roll up on a crime in progress. Um, apprehending offenders usually happens leaving the scene of a crime, things of that nature.
Thank you.
Chief, is there, are there any kinds of statistics about how often a traffic stop, like a serious being stopped? It, it sounds like it, it was often, but I, I'm wondering if it's, you know, is there, is there any way to, how often it, uh, that surprises me that it would be that often when it's somebody's taillight out or something, but is that, is that countable? I don't even know.
Um, yeah, I probably could compile some statistics, uh, regarding that. I don't think they're contained in those statistics, but, uh, um...
Just sounds, it sounds much bigger than I would have expected to, that there were, you know, serious crimes resulting from that. I don't know.
Well, you know, put it in perspective of, of Fairfield does not have a, a serious crime problem. But to, uh, R.T.M. members, Perugini's comment, um, most officers feel, and I, and I believe it could be statistically proven, that some of their best arrests for, for crimes and felonies happen as a result of motor vehicle stops.
Okay. Um, thank you. Are there, oh, I hear my phone is not working again. Um, can people hear me okay?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Um, are there any other questions before we let, um, Chief Liddy and, and Deputy Chief Smith go?
Did Representative Brower have a question there, Madam Moderator? It's in the chat. I think he's having trouble with his...
Yeah, I can't really, I guess it is a question with its sound. Yeah, Representative Brower asked, "How does all this affect your budget? And which line item, as the R.T.M. doesn't have oversight on your activities, but we do approve your budget?"
So...
From Representative Brower.
So the question is, if I can, uh, repeat it so I get it right, how has the, the, the protests that have taken place and, and the overall climate affected my existing budget?
I don't know what he meant by "all this." Maybe our conversation? I'm not really sure what... Maybe Representative Brower, if you want to type in an explanation?
Well, I'll start by saying that the only negative impact that I've had regarding the budget is the three protest events that have taken place. I did have to, um, up-staff for the first one. Um, the second one, which turned out to be not much of anything, I had to up-staff a lot because of different threats that were made. And the third one was very peaceful and, um, minimal up-staffing. So currently, I, I have not spent a lot more money and overtime, uh, regarding what's going on.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I think we don't have any more questions, so, um, thank you so much to Chief Liddy and, oh, here, sorry, Mr. Gra, Representative Brower is asking, "How does the police activities which the R.T.M. doesn't have oversight on affect your budget?" I, I'm not sure we, I understand that either.
Let's move on.
I don't know. I'm not sure it's... Um, I don't know what that meant. How does the, how do the police activities that the R.T.M. doesn't have oversight of affect your budget? I'm not su, I'm not sure what, how to... He wants to know how this discussion is related to R.T.M. budget approval. Um, and I'm not sure that's really a question for Chief Liddy. Uh, it's probably a question for me and why we're at, why we're meeting with Chief Liddy. Um, and I already explained at the beginning of the meeting why. And also, Chief Liddy, it just, it was very, very open to us, and I think, let me not speak for you, Chief Liddy, but I think, as you said earlier, you recognize what's going on right now and the importance of dialogue with the town about, um, police policy and, and you've been very forthcoming. So, um, I, I want to thank you very much for coming and, and thanks to Deputy, Deputy Chief Smith. Um, and you've been a great help answering a lot of questions.
Uh, we, we thank you very, very much. I, I really felt it was important that we put a lot of time and effort into our policies and giving us the opportunity to, to, to make them as transparent as possible is, is beneficial to us. So thank you.
That's great. Well, that's, um, have a good evening. Thanks.
You too. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief.
Uh, so we will now move to Item Four on the agenda. To hear, consider, and act upon the following appointment as an alternate to the Harbor Management Commission, as recommend, as recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Douglas E. Metcich, Democrat, 1201 Old Field Road, term November 2019 to 2021. Is there a motion to approve this resolution? I think Jay, I think Representative Volk made the motion. Representative Kelly seconds, Alice Kelly seconds the motion. Um, is Mr. Metcich here?
Yes, I am, here.
Oh, how are you tonight?
Good evening. How are you?
Thank you for, good thanks. Um, thank you for coming and speaking with us. Can you, uh, tell us very briefly a little bit about, um, your background and, and why you're interested in this position?
Sure, of course. Uh, and thanks everybody for having me this evening. Um, my family, my wife and I and kids, we've been residents in town since 1997. Uh, I'm a local boater, local sailor, local angler. Um, I've also had a good part of my career, uh, in and around the marine industry. I've been CEO of two, uh, well-known boat builders, one of which also owned and operated for service yards and had similar roles, um, with those companies and how we interacted with civic organizations, uh, the management plans of, of the waterfronts there in Rhode Island and Maine, uh, and actually in some other countries. Uh, I've been wanting to find a way to, uh, at this point in my career, get more involved in town activities. And, uh, after speaking with, um, Nancy Lefkowitz, thought that, uh, the harbor management might be a good way for me to get involved. And so in this position, became available, we discussed it. So, um, that's my background and, uh, why I'd like to get involved.
That's great. Thank you very, very much. Are there any questions for Mr. Metcich? Okay. Um, seeing none, um, can everybody unmute their phones, please, or their microphones, and we will, um, take a vote on approving his appointment? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any, anyone opposed? Abstentions? Okay, thank you. Um, the motion passes. Thank you so much for, for joining us, Mr. Metcich, and congratulations.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Um, so we will move on to Item Five on the agenda. To hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Resolved that the applications received under the Neighborhood Assistance Act program are hereby approved, and that Director of Community and Economic Development is hereby designated as the municipal liaison of the town of Fairfield for this program. May I have a motion, uh, to approve? Representative McDermott, seconded by Representative Seibert. Um, Mr. Barnhart, are you with us tonight? I think I saw you. Yes, I see you.
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, how are you tonight?
Good. Thank you, Madam Moderator. Uh, just very briefly, for the R.T.M.'s consideration, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, so this is a state program that provides a tax credit to businesses that offer a, uh, make a cash contribution to approved, uh, community programs conducted either by a municipal agency or a nonprofit organization. Um, in order for it to be considered, uh, it needs to be approved by the legislative body of the, of the town or, or city, uh, following a public hearing which we held, and then submitted in, in a timely manner to the Department of Revenue Services. And our, the other obligation is to designate a liaison, uh, to work with the state in administering the program, which traditionally has, uh, fallen to, uh, to my office. Uh, we did, uh, solicit applications, as we have done in past years. We received eight applications from six different organizations that meet the criteria, and, uh, they are included in your packet for your consideration. Be happy, there are no town funds involved in this program. Um, be happy to answer any questions that you have or other members may have this evening.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Barnhart on this item? Just enter it in the chat or let me know in the chat if you do. Okay. I don't think there are any questions, so, uh, if everyone could unmute, we'll take a vote. Okay, all in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay, thank you. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very, very much. And Mr. Barnhart, stay right where you are, because we're going to move to the next. Item is also, um, for your department, Item Six on us. To hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Resolved that the program, year 46, 2020 to September 30, 2020, the development block grant is hereby approved in the amount of $550,000, which includes entitlement grant funds of $521,653 and program income of $28,000. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Barnhart on this item? Just enter it in the chat or let me know in the chat if you do. Okay. I don't think there are any questions. So, if everyone could unmute, we'll take a vote. Okay, all in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay, thank you. The motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And Mr. Barnhart, stay right where you are because we're going to move to the next item is also for your department. Item six on us. To hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Board of Selectmen. Resolved that the program year 46, 2020 to September 30, 2021, the development block grant is hereby approved in the amount of $550,000, which includes entitlement grant funds of $521,653 and program income of $28,347. And further resolved that Brenda L. Cupchik, First Select Woman of the Town of Fairfield, be and hereby is authorized to execute any and all necessary documents that facilitate the town's participation in said CDVG program. May I have a motion to approve, please? Representative Havy, and seconded by Representative Volk. Mr. Barnhart?
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator and members of the RTM. So, this past month, you considered an amendment to our annual action plan to account for additional community development block grant dollars that were provided under the CARES Act. This is our regular CDVG entitlement grant for the program year that begins October 1 of 2020. Many of you know that the CDVG program is administered by the Department of Housing and Urban Development for an entitlement community, meaning that we receive an annual allocation of these funds from the federal government each year without need to competitively apply. Program's intent is to provide viable communities by providing decent housing, suitable living environment, expanded economic opportunities for persons, principally for persons of low to moderate income. So, all the programs or activities that we consider for funding do need to meet the national objective, one of three, and be eligible for funding consideration. We do need to notice of, provide for public engagement throughout this process, which we have done through several public hearings, including one virtually this past week. So, before you is, I do want to make one requested change to the resolution that appears before you. To be consistent with the backup information I provided, as well as the information we provided to the public through the public hearing process, the total amount should be $545,500, with program income of $23,847. Entitlement grant funds from HUD remain the same. Opposed allocations that were presented to you in your packet remain the same. Many of these are activities which we funded year after year. The only change really is we more conservatively estimated what our program income will be for the upcoming year. So, if I could ask to make an amendment to the motion to reflect those changes, I would much appreciate it and I apologize for the error.
Okay, thank you. Can I have a motion to amend the resolution as explained by Mr. Barnhart?
Representative Iacono, I make the motion.
Thank you. Second? Who would like to second it? Representative Havy seconded it. So, we'll have a vote now just on this amendment. The amendment means that the first, that it will now read, "Resolved that the program year 46, October 1, 2020 to September 30, 2021, community development block grant is hereby approved in the amount of $545,500, which includes entitlement grant funds of $521,653 and program income of $23,847." So, can I, can everyone unmute? We're going to vote on just this amendment and then we'll go back to the main motion. Okay. All in favor of the amendment to the dollar amounts, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that motion passes unanimously. So, we still have the main motion on the table. I see that Representative Vergara has a question.
Yes, thank you. Jill Vergara, District 7. Hi, Mark. I looked over the list of the activities for the public service activities and I just didn't, one of them was unfamiliar to me. Can you explain what Wolfgang Volunteer Coordinator is?
Sure. Thank you for the question. This past year, actually, for the first time, the current program year, we provided a small amount of funding as a pilot initiative for Wolfgang, which provides vocational training for developmentally disabled young people. And this would be an effort to coordinate those activities and provide important socialization and vocational training to those young people through the work of that organization.
Well, that sounds great. Thank you very much. I have another question also about the affordable housing activities. Can you explain to me almost, you know, all of these itemized, the list of the multifamily rehab program, all of the programs?
Yes. Thank you for the opportunity to explain that a little bit further. So, the multifamily rehab and single-family rehab programs, as well as the handyman and homeownership assistance programs, are all administered through our office using community development block grant funds. So, we provide some assistance in the case of a single-family rehab owner occupied. We provide assistance in the form of a no-interest indefinite-term loan that will enable the income-eligible homeowner to make improvements to their primary residence. For our homeownership assistance, we provide, again, closing costs and down payment assistance in the form primarily of a no-interest indefinite-term loan. Those are the sources of our program income that I referred to earlier. The handyman program, it really assists very low-income individuals, primarily seniors, in making minor repairs around the home. And our multifamily rehab program is for those non-owner-occupied properties, rental properties, whereby we can provide assistance in return for a deed restriction requiring that the units be made affordable or rented at affordable rates. So, all those are very important for us in terms of not only maintaining the quality of our housing stock, but also making it easier for folks in lower-income areas, homeowners, seniors and the like, to maintain their properties.
Yeah, these sound vital and great. How do you advertise these programs and make everyone in town aware of them?
Well, this is certainly a great opportunity here, but we don't rest on these meetings. So, we do provide notice in the newspapers or through media, both digital as well as print. We also have done seminars and workshops at the Senior Center. For example, I meet regularly with the Fairfield Board of Realtors to also provide information with regard to our homeownership assistance programs. So, if they're working with clients that are looking to buy a home, a first home in Fairfield, and they might be looking at starter homes, this might be something they also provide information about.
Do you ever attend the forums that the Social Services holds at the Senior Center? They occasionally host forums where they get a lot of different social services together to, and have the community in to get pamphlets. I didn't see you there last time.
I haven't recently, but usually the person who actually runs the program, in this case Sonia Hein, attends, although she's relatively new. Lori Gutman, her predecessor, was at those workshops.
Okay, great. And I have one more question for you. Thank you. I'm sorry, I have so many questions, Mark. For the public facilities and non-housing needs, I saw that we can allocate some money for DPW street and sidewalk improvements? And I wanted to see if you prioritize neighborhoods in town that are lower income. How do you determine which neighborhoods are going to receive this?
Yes, we start with census tracts that do meet the criteria for HUD as being areas of predominant low-moderate-income populations. We don't have any majority census tracts or block groups that meet that definition, but we do have census tracts or block groups that do meet concentrations of low-moderate income. And we can make investments in those neighborhoods. We then review that, those areas, geographical areas of investment with Public Works, who makes a determination as to, you know, their needs in terms of streets or sidewalks that do need improvement. So, we very much defer to the Public Works Department to determine priorities, but we also try to marry that, we do marry that with the need to be geographically sensitive to those areas that are approved for investment.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mark.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions for Representative, for Mr. Barnhart? I don't see any. So, we're going to vote on the main resolution as amended by the amendment. So, if you could all unmute, please? All in favor of the resolution as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Thanks, Mark, for being here. Much appreciated.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thanks. You too. Okay, we'll move on to item seven, our last item for the evening. To hear, consider, and act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Town Plan and Zone Commission. Resolved that the Town of Fairfield abandon the remaining portion of the town-owned paper street known as Cherry Street, which intersects with King's Highway, shown on the attached map, reserving, however, an easement for the sewer, the location and dimensions of which shall be as determined by the town engineer. Which easement shall be recorded on the land records of the Town of Fairfield. Can I have a motion to approve this resolution, please? Representative Volk, seconded by Representative Perugini. Is Mr. Hurley here?
Jim Went here, Madam Moderator, from the Planning Director.
Oh, thank you. How are you tonight?
I'm well. And Attorney Ambrose is on as well for the petitioner. Cherry Street is a paper street and which extends northerly from King's Highway. And by paper street, I mean that it exists on paper only. No road improvements have ever been made. It's a 50-foot-wide piece of strip that's 175 feet in depth. It's bounded by King's Highway on the south. It's bounded on the west by a business property known as Circle Collision. It's bounded on the east by another business property known as Fairfield Automatic Transmission. And it's bounded on the north by the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond parking lot. The northerly portion of Cherry Street was previously abandoned by the town in 1980. The Town Plan and Zoning Commission voted on May 26 of this year pursuant to the petition to recommend abandonment as, to the adjacent owners, as there's no foreseeable use for the town. There is an existing storm drain that falls within this property that will be the subject of a drain easement, as noted in the call. Other than that, I don't have any questions, Madam Moderator, unless there are those from your members. And I know Attorney Ambrose also wishes to be heard.
Okay. Mr. Ambrose?
If I may be heard. Good evening. This particular street has never, good evening. This street has never been developed and the abandonment of the same would have no adverse effect on traffic circulation in this area. It's now dead-ended into property owned by Bed Bath &amp; Beyond. The portion of this road will allow for both businesses to operate in a more efficient manner and would create additional tax revenue for the Town of Fairfield. So, I see it as a win-win situation for all parties.
Thank you. Representative Havy?
Sorry, I'm unmuted. There it goes.
We can hear you.
Oh, okay. Hi, Lisa Havy, District 6. I have a question about development on that easement. It says in an email that the town doesn't see any structures going up there, but is there any possibility that those businesses could expand their businesses into that area or that any other structures could be built in the paper street?
This is Jim Went. For the record, oh, go ahead, Peter.
No, go ahead, Jim.
If this strip is abandoned, a 25-foot width would go to each of the abutting owners. So, their properties would get larger. So, theoretically, it could be used for future development. There is a side yard setback that would apply from the property line that would be in the middle of this. The only constraint would be that a building would not be able to be placed over the drainage easement that is going to be required to preserve access to the existing drainage pipe. And I know the engineering department is requiring that the manhole, there's an existing manhole there that needs to be daylighted and not covered. So, it may have a marginal increase in the potential developability of these two parcels, but it won't be, if abandoned, you know, each of these adjacent pieces becomes 25 feet wider.
Thank you. I would like to see, I live, fair disclosure, I live across the street and see Cherry Street every day, several times a day. And I, given the businesses and the types of businesses, I would really like to see that no building of any kind could be built on this, this gift to them. Is that unreasonable?
Well, if it becomes the, go ahead, Peter.
Yeah. Our immediate concern is to provide for a line of use. At the present time, this 50-foot strip, there's parking on, throughout that strip. And we'd like to segregate the areas that would be used by Circle Holdings or Circle Collision and that to be used by Fairfield Automatic Transmission. It's a mess as it presently stands. And I think if this passes, both parties would have an interest in using that new portion for parking purposes for their own entities.
Yes, sir. I imagine the use of the property is not going to change any at all from yesterday till tomorrow, till next week. We've lived here over 20 years and we knew when we moved in it was a paper street and businesses have enjoyed it. They use it, you know, it's not been an eyesore, it's not been, I just, it's so small, I would hate to see something else added to that area, given the, you know, the size of it. That's a concern of mine.
There's no immediate, there's no immediate need nor desire for either of my clients to build on that strip.
And if there was, there didn't seem to be any public notice to the zoning meeting regarding neighbors, then if they were to build on that, would, is that, is zoning, sorry, is zoning, do they put out local notices, people at their neighborhood is being adjusted?
Yes, Jim Went, for the record. If there's an application to develop the property or build something that requires a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission, all property owners within 200 feet get a direct notice, in addition to the notices that are made on the town's website and published in the paper.
Ah, that change of ownership doesn't get shared?
No, this is not a, this, the action by the Planning and Zoning Commission was not an approval or denial. It was as a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen as to whether or not they thought that there was a future use of the property that would foreclose its abandonment. The commission felt there wasn't a foreseeable need to retain this piece of property.
All right. Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Representative Bové?
Hi. Representative Havy has aside my questions. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Representative Georgiades?
Representative Georgiades, District 9. This is for Peter Ambrose. Hi, Peter, how are you?
Hi.
You mentioned the tax revenue, you mentioned the tax revenue for the town. How much additional tax revenue would this generate for the town?
I'm not sure. I could not definitively tell you what the amount would be, but it would create additional tax revenue for the town in that strip of land, which is approximately 175 feet deep and 50 feet wide. which is approximately one hundred and seventy-five feet deep and fifty feet wide.
Okay. You were using it as part of your, you know, the reason we should approve this. So, I just was wondering what the revenue, additional revenue would be. I do have a question for Jim. Go ahead.
No, it would obviously increase the, the taxability of both parcels.
Okay, um, obviously, yes. So, the zoning, Jim Went. I know along that strip, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond is, is a two-story at least building and the storage, the West East Storage Facility, I think is, what, is that six stories tall? Would all of these areas, I was looking it up on my map, is that entire side of the street zoned for the same height as the West East Storage?
Um, no, it's a mix. West East is not five stories. It's the, West East, it's in an industrial district in the, in the, yeah, forty, forty, forty feet max. The Bed Bath &amp; Beyond piece is commercial, which allows for four stories, forty feet. Same, the, the two properties adjacent are currently industrial. So, there is no story height limit. It's just a height limit of forty feet.
So, if Circle, if these, let's say these properties bought this land and then sold it currently with no restrictions on the use of the Cherry Street, they could be sold and a four-story building could go up. It's zoned currently for that? It wouldn't need to have a, a zoning, help me with the word, a variance?
Well, it depends on the use of being-
Because they're already zoned to be that tall?
Yes, the, the, the zone is already there. It, it wouldn't change whether this is abandoned or not. The, the parcel by itself, the twenty, the fifty-foot wide swath that would be divided half and half between the abutting properties, wouldn't in and itself be large enough to be a developable parcel.
But added to the existing ones, would it make them, I mean, do you have to be a certain size to be that tall? Or you could just put anything that tall on any size piece of property? So, the size of the property does not impact whether they can build the four-story tall?
Correct. The, the lot size does not dictate the height. What dictates the overall development potential for the property is not only its size, but typically, you know, the parking that can be provided on the site to, to support whatever size building is being proposed. So, it's not, the, the height of a potential building here is not impacted one, one way or the other from this section.
Okay, thank you.
Representative Vergara?
Thank you. Jill Vergara, District Seven. Hi, Jim and Peter.
Hi.
There was an, hi, uh, sorry. There was an email from Bill Hurley attached to the backup documents. It's an email dated Tuesday, December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. And he writes in the message that, let's see, provision for no structures within drainage easements and prefer no structures within the old row. Has that been agreed to in writing? That the people who gain this property will abide by that restriction? That there will be no structures within the drainage easement and that there will be no structures within the old row? Why, if, if our town engineer wants that to happen, why haven't we put that in any language?
That language will have to be in the actual easement agreement. That will have to be prepared and submitted to zoning to finalize this application. So, that, that will have to be part of the maintenance agreement.
Okay. Do we have any power in our vote right now to require that that be added into the agreement?
Well, we'll have to abide by what engineering has told us and what Bill Hurley has told us we're going to have to abide by. He has submitted to the Board of Selectmen a statement which we're going to have to abide by and, and I've discussed that with Jim Went.
Okay. It's hard for me, this is in my district. So, it's, it's in District Seven and then it also, it, it abuts District Six. So, it involves a lot of us and it's hard for me to vote for this not having the affirmation that, that this is going to be abided by, that there will not be building on this paper street.
Well, I think the understanding, Jill, is that there will be no building on the maintenance on the easement itself. We, we understand that because the town will have to have access to that, to that easement area.
Okay.
We're, we're committed to that.
Okay. Thank you, Peter.
You're welcome.
Representative Iacono?
Madam Moderator, whoever, whomever can answer this, Attorney Ambrose or Mr. Went. Is it necessary to vote on this? Is there a timeframe, a deadline on this? It's very difficult hearing these things and voting on them all in the one evening. Is it possible to hold this off to our September meeting when we meet again? It sounds like we're working with mutual parties in the town. Is there something of urgency that this needs to be done tonight?
I don't think there's an immediate urgency that it be done tonight, but it, Pam, I don't, I submit to you that the abandonment of the remainder of Cherry Street, you know, is a, is rather a, not a, not a huge act. I know already there's been an abandonment of most of Cherry Street and there's another street in the immediate area which was abandoned some time ago. But, you know, we've been at this for some time. It'd be nice to, to have the RTM vote on the matter. I do think it's a benefit of, for both property owners because each property owner will accrue an additional twenty-five feet of space by approximately one hundred and seventy feet in length. Put it off for another two, two months, I, I don't think serves any purpose. Obviously, that's, that's something that you've got to decide.
Okay. I, I think for me personally, I, I might abstain on this. I, I'd like to do a little bit more homework on it, but that's just me personally. And thank you for addressing that. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
You could, Representative Iacono, you could also make a motion to postpone to the next meeting if you want to. I think I have a sense of the body about that if you want. Meanwhile, Representative Havy?
Yes, hi. Thank you. Lisa Havy, District Six. I would like to make a motion to move this to the next meeting.
Representative Vergara, second. All in favor? Sorry, you should unmute your, um-
Wait, there, there should be discussion on postponing.
Yes, you're right. I'm sorry. Let's go ahead, please. Let's discuss. Who has, we heard from Representative Iacono, yeah.
Start, I'm sorry. I, I just jumped in on the floor. Am I, am I recognized? I apologize.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. I, I, I do, I, I would be in favor of this, but I also want to stand in recess for July and August. So, if it means coming back in July, I'm perfectly willing to let those who are fully informed go ahead and vote on this. If, if it's that we're going to hold off and we're with the understanding that this is September, then I'd be more inclined to support. Thank you.
Mr. Went, do you have any comment on postponing in terms of town's interest or any requirements about timing?
There's no timing criteria that I'm aware of, Madam Moderator. I'll yield to the, the comments of Mr. Ambrose. You know, this, it's not, whatever this board chooses to do, there's no legal timeframe by which you need to make a decision.
Okay, thank you. Representative McCormick?
Karen McCormick, District Two. I would also be in favor of tabling this for a bit of time. I am curious and would like to get some information, if at all possible, on the tax revenue to the town because I think in, you know, determining the cost benefit versus the risk of maybe something negative happening with this property down the road and exposure to the neighbors there, I think it would make more sense if it would be, if at all possible, to get some additional numbers on the tax revenue to the town. I don't understand how we can make a decision on this without knowing what that benefit might be. So, that's just my comment on that.
Thank you. Representative Gerber?
Yeah, I was just going to say, in fairness to the neighbors there, you know, I think what, what, what I don't understand is if, if, if we were to move ahead and approve this, what then would be the rights of the, of the current property owners with the additional space to build? And how would that impact the neighborhood once they get that additional space? Would it then require a variance? If not, it would just be pro forma and they could go ahead and build, and that could impact the neighbors. So, I think we need to, to understand that.
Okay. I also just want to comment that-
I don't know if that was a question you want me to resolve.
Oh, if you can respond to that, that would be great.
Any, Jim Went, for the record, and any proposal to develop the, for construction on either of these sites would require an application and a public hearing before the Planning and Zoning Commission. It wouldn't be an as-of-right over-the-counter permit.
Yeah, Jim, this is Phil Gerber. Absolutely, except if they have the land and, and it's reasonable with the additional land for them to build more, the current property owners will have very little pull in, in a zoning meeting. I mean, we've all been through this, you know, what, you know, if they need a, if they need a variance, it's one thing. If, if, if they have the, the land and can build, they will build. It'll be very, it's much harder, you know, to, to reject it. So, I just think in fairness to the, to the, to the neighborhood, you know, we should at least know what, what the potential outcomes are for them.
So, it sounds like at a minimum, people would-
Or do you disagree?
Well, any potential outcome is hypothetical at this point. I can't give you a definitive answer on, on what, what the, the property owners may or may not choose to do down the road with the extra twenty-five feet in width.
We, we, we have all been in zoning meetings and we have all heard the lawyer say they have a right, they have the, they have the land, they have the right to do this, you must approve this. And then you get no fight and then they get, there's a loss. But once they have the land, they, we, we need to know what, what they can do with it without getting, you know, a, a, a variance. Not just approval, because approval is usually pro forma if, unless it's specifically not allowed.
I can, for the record, I, I can merely state, this is Peter Ambrose, I can merely state that neither, neither property owner has any intention to build or to develop the property at this time.
Right. So, I think the, the issue then would be why not put that in writing? And if that were in writing, then I guess we, you wouldn't have opposition by, by some of the people speaking.
I'm not quite clear, Bill, as to what you're looking for in writing. Are you looking for a representation that, that the property owners, that the two property owners would not build on this?
Would not be allowed to build, yes. No, no, that, 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 they, that they could not increase the- I mean, at, at this time, you know, I, I, look, we, we, many of us have been burned by development in our backyards here. So, as you probably know, so, you know, we, we, you know, one, one person represents one thing and then the next person buys the property and does something else. There's very little we can do about it. At least, you know, I think, you know, we, if we set up, set a chain of events in motion tonight by approving this, we could end up with neighbors who down the line are very angry and upset at us for doing that. There is a potential chain of events unless you tell us that there isn't, that it's impossible, that they can't increase the coverage of the properties, they can't make it a bigger building. But, but at least we, you know, the, the, the neighbors need to at least understand that, that this could happen, if it could happen. I mean, that's the question I think people are asking.
I do want to point out that in the comments, and this is the moderator, if I could just point out that there are some comments about recognizing that, that no intention to build at this time is, you know, people, some people are expressing concern about future plans to build to, to back up Representative Gerber's saying. I don't like to not share the comments. And Representative, Mr. Ambrose, can you just confirm that you represent those businesses on either side of the, of the? Okay, thank you.
Oh, that's correct. I represent Circle Holding, Connecticut LLC and Scott Johnston, the two property owners.
Okay, thank you.
Just, if I may, Madam Moderator, Jim Went, just to answer Mr. Gerber's previous question, yes, theoretically, if someone is going to redevelop both of these properties, they are each getting about four thousand square feet larger from this proposal, which would potentially allow a larger footprint of building to potentially be developed. That's, that would, again, but that, any new building, you know, again, would be subject to future review. So, even though, yes, there, there's no immediate development plan, but absolutely, the, the answer is, is yes, that, you know, about four thousand square feet each, these parcels are being enlarged. So, it would enhance the potential to park that may, you know, allow a modestly larger building than would otherwise be permitted.
Right. So, it, all I'm saying is that I don't live in that neighborhood. It's not my district. But if I lived in that neighborhood and I didn't want a bigger building there, I'd be pretty upset that this was sort of a back, a backdoor way of allowing a potentially larger building with greater certainty that it would get approved and that someone's saying, sorry, there's nothing we can do about it. It's, you know, this, this structure they want to put in is allowable, you know, it doesn't require variances. I'd be pretty upset. I'd say, wait a minute, that wasn't the case. How did this happen? So, at least they should be warned and given the chance to comment, as they would, you know, if there was a variance. I mean, it's like you're, you're sort of, it's a backdoor sort of potential, you know, you know, expansion of their property that would allow a larger building then.
Representative Iacono just properly reminded me that the motion on the table right now is to postpone. So, we can discuss if anyone has any comment, more comments about postponing. I think Representative Gerber's point was that he wanted some more information about this, which I'm gathering is, he'd like to postpone.
The neighbors should know that this could happen, that's all.
Are there any other comments about the motion to postpone before we vote on that? I do want to just, I do want to comment that I'm not sure yet that we won't have meetings in July and August. I haven't learned yet what's on the horizon and whether we have to, whether there's anything that's time-sensitive. So, there's no guarantee at this moment that we will have July and August off. We do usually try to do that. Wanted to mention that. So, I see no other comments. Can we, can everyone unmute and we will, Representative Ringel would like to comment. Representative Ringel? Marissa?
Yes, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, I hear you now, yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. So, the, the original idea is for a, excuse me, Representative Ringel, District Ten. Thank you. Sorry about the mute buttons. The original proposal is for an easement for a sewer project and drainage. Is there a schedule on the table about the sewer that we need to just be mindful of? That is the project. When is the start date for the project and how does this part of the project fit into that schedule and budget?
There, there's no- There's no, Jim Went, for the record, there's no sewer project. The easement that's being reserved is to, so the town would have access over an existing drainage pipe that's already there. So there's nothing new to be installed. Should the land be, or the right-of-way be abandoned, there would be a need to reserve an easement over that existing pipe. So there's no time sensitivity to the existing infrastructure that's there.
And we are, we, currently, we have access to the drainage in case it starts overflowing? There's no, no one, no properties are stopping us, right?
The right-of-way, yeah, yeah, that's correct. There's presently access today, and there's proposed to be access through the easement that's required as part of this proposal.
Okay. So there's, are there any disadvantages on the projects or the accessibility? Let's say if there's a hurricane, are there any disadvantages for us not approving this right now?
I'm not understanding the question, but I don't, I don't think so, because again, there's no change proposed to the pipe. The pipe exists, we have access to it, and we will have access to it whether or not this is abandoned.
Okay, that answers my question, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other comments? Representative Brower has asked, will this project add to the assessment of the adjoining properties? And I think you did say that this would increase the taxes paid by those property owners, is that correct? But we don't know by what amount.
No, we don't know. I can, but, but there will be a tax benefit to the town.
Mm-hmm. And then Representative Brower also asked, has the property been considered for town-owned affordable housing? Interesting question. Representative, Mr. Went, is that, do you know?
For town-owned affordable housing? Not to my knowledge.
Not to my knowledge either.
Mr. Barnhart, is, are you on anymore? Probably not. Okay. So we don't know the answer to that. Okay, so I think it's time, unless anyone has any other comments, just about the postponement of this item, then we're get, we can vote on that motion to postpone, which would be to the next meeting, which may be July or August, or it may be as late as September. So if anyone can unmute, we'll take a vote. And all, we may end up having to do a roll call vote, we'll see if, if, all in sync or not. All in favor of postponing this motion until the next meeting? They say aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay, so that motion passes unanimously, and we will postpone that item to the next meeting. Mr. Went and Mr. Ambrose, thank you for joining us.
Thank you.
And we'll send you some questions as I, if the people on the RTM who have been asking questions could email me, I'll forward you the questions so we can gather the information people are looking for.
My pleasure, thank you.
Good to see you, Peter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That, those are all the items for this meeting. Can I have a motion to adjourn, please? Representative Bové, seconded by Representative Param. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.